...of the East Hampton Planning Board for Tuesday, October 18th, 2016. Is there anybody here to speak to anything that is not on the agenda for tonight's meeting? All right, moving right along. Planning Board minutes from our October 4th, 2016 meeting. I was absent, but did anybody have any errors or omissions to note?
No, I think so.
All right.
Motion to approve the minutes from October 4th, 2016.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And I will say. All right, moving along to A and R's. 242 Park Street, George Malou. Come down inside. Call if you're right one.
It does.
There we go. All right, you want to tell us briefly what you're planning on doing?
Sure, this is the second half of the deal. I was reading all some of my name and address, of course, this whole thing. And to score up his land and read it. Long discussed that just bringing it solely that, I was going to buy this from him. He'd score up my land as well. There's no road frontage and...
Yeah, so the frontage doesn't change, so there's no issue there.
I make a motion we approve the A and R's presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, all right.
Can I ask, really good copy, see if I have to sign more, so you should use my lawyer. Put the hands.
Sure. I can sign the law.
Do I put those tomorrow?
I can do it right now.
Right now.
Never wait.
Wait, that way it's safe to trip.
Monty fact on the transmission.
Can you stand the work use five?
Uh, we keep, uh, let me say have to do, I have to do this every time. You get a Mylar and you want a copy for yourself and you want one for your lawyer and you want one for the property owners, with those three there. And then we get one for the secret, one for planning board. Those are the two most important ones. Um, but I do get one to the assessors as well. So if you need, I don't know.
Yeah. I've heard different numbers.
They go to the Mylar. So, um, yeah, I need at least three.
If I have the Mylar and three additional, that'll satisfy me and you guys can have the rest.
Okay.
Just the Mylar, I think? All right.
Yeah, sign the Mylar and give them three and it'll be satisfied.
It will be. You're on the way. What is counting? Three for you and we got one, two, and the Mylar.
And the Mylar goes to him, which he's got filed for.
So you want to get two for you.
We can't finally have them signed.
Okay.
For us, so I'm extremely.
All right. All right. Thank you. Thank you, have a good night. All right. Another A and R for 10 South Street.
Yep.
All right, come on down. So show us what's going on here.
Um, sure, we have a residence right here in 10 South Street. The property itself is surrounded by woods. It's like all the way up to 6 South Street. And the side here is a lot of the woods, but it's an oversized lot for using. Barely part of it down here. If you want to separate this and make this into a building lot. It's very oversized. It's a very good sized lot. It's got plenty of frontage on the front and it's very deep. So we want to make this one right here in the middle, the building lot. This is the house.
All right, so these two right now are the whole lot?
Yes.
This is, this is a different property?
This is the new property right here.
Okay, and so the new lot's still going to have 100?
Yep. And it's still very deep.
Yep.
It's like a really nice building lot, actually. And won't, won't make this house too small or this one. But we're just not using it, so I figured this way here, maybe we can make a building lot out of there.
That's a street on the back?
This is a driveway way over here and this is a south.
Full set in the back.
This is a full property.
Okay.
Used to be 6 South Street. It's actually a home that my family used to own. It's on the top here and had a very big 4 acres. So no one really be, it won't be anybody's backyard and buddy of frontage and...
All right, any other questions?
No. Motion to endorse the A and R for 10 South Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, all right.
No, because you mean three, right? I think I gave them three and the Mylar one. But you need to keep three, correct?
We need two.
We need, at a minimum, I need two, but I, it would be great if I need one to the assessor as well.
Okay, so if you can keep three, I can get three, that would be great.
Is that your bike out there?
Yeah.
That is pretty amazing. Pretty amazing.
Fun toy, especially when it's warm like this.
I bet there's not a person in the room that did not know this is.
Beautiful summer. Beautiful summer, once the heat went, I can't take those 90 degree days on the road.
No, 60, 65.
So you want three and the Mylar for you?
Yep, and then we have those three for the town.
Do you want these one signed?
Uh, I need at least two of them signed, if there does not need to be signed.
Can you tell our daughter? They're good for someone.
No rubber hands, that's a...
She won't miss one.
All right. So I'm all set.
Thanks.
Have a good day.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, moving right along. Uh, no old business, new business. Letter of credit for 311 East Street, Mount Thomas Estates. Somebody want to speak to that? Who's keeping it for the record?
I'm Tom Adams.
I'm Bob Adams.
We're happy to say, after many years, this project is finally coming to completion. And we're here to ask that we use a letter of credit.
Okay. Um, and you've had some communication with the DPW, right?
We have, yes.
Um, it looked like as of the email today, there were still some issues with the DPW, maybe a fire hydrant, and entrance fees for water and sewer.
Yeah, and we, we just found out about that water and sewer bill yesterday, too. And we haven't fully researched it yet. The unit that's in question was started by the prior developer and he was issuing a building permit. Well, when you get a building permit, you have to pay your water. So, so we were on the assumption that that water and sewer was paid. We went in, we got a second building permit, so there were actually two permits issued for the same amount of work. And we didn't have to pay a water and sewer bill, which again, made us think that the water and sewer bill was paid. We just found out yesterday that it wasn't, so we're in the process of researching that.
Okay, and what about the fire hydrant?
Um, it was his recommendation that he raise the foot.
Yeah.
Um, and we just again found that out yesterday, so we haven't had a chance to address that yet.
Okay, do you have any objections to doing that, or do you have somebody?
No, he said, he said we could put one foot riser on that.
Yeah.
We can certainly have that done and, and the water sewer bill is not an issue if it's, you know, if it is outstanding.
And other than that, from your perspective, you think you've completed everything else?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
What about sidewalks?
Um, the sidewalks that are there are the ones that were requested to be left by the association. And I have a letter to state that that's what we'd like to see it. Um, the association took the project over, um, in July last year. There are actually some board members here that, that could, uh, speak to that. And the association asked us to remove the sidewalks. So that's what we did.
I'm worried about that too, when we walked out there. But they noted that it was one of the things addressed by Joe, but he'd removed just about everything he, including the covered over manhole. And only had these two items left. His, his email that came out today, if I understand correctly, Jessica, says that after meeting, would you resolve everything but those two from his earlier list? Did you get that from that as well?
Yes, I met with him very briefly and, um, I don't know if you would be willing to open the plan. So I can take a look. This is the same one you gave Joe, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so there's one with the systems on it saying that. This one?
Tribute.
Okay, so one of his concerns was now that he saw that the sewer, the sewer connections are outside the roadway, because he was unclear about that. Um, so now he knows where those are located and accessed. Um, there's two catch basins here that he can access if needed. Um, so that's where DPW may need to come here. This is going to probably, I presume, remain a private road. I don't underst, I've not heard that this is going to, this road's going to get taken over by the town any time. So, and DPW's under the assumption that this will continue to be remained a public, a private road, not a public road. So where DPW is concerned is in terms of accessing these sewer connections if something goes and that needs to get addressed. And then the catch basins as well, again, in terms of this tying into the city system. So he said he was aware that there were, um, this manhole covers, they were underneath, but he doesn't need to access those. The only things he's going to be needing to access, because this will remain a private way, is the sewer.
Okay.
And potentially the catch basins that are located right there.
So what are the manhole covers that are underneath for? That are...
Hold on, hold on.
Yeah, hold on one sec. Okay, we'll take comments.
Uh, yeah, anyway, what happens? If they do have to get in and access those manhole covers, and are they readily available?
Uh, they are readily available, but you should have plenty of access to the storm drains.
But usually the manholes are exposed so that if you don't go in, can get at them, but they're covered.
Correct. So... Sure, there's, no, some, some.
There's...
Well, no, the sewer manholes are the ones that were buried. There's at least one that's buried under the new blacktop.
Not sore, it's from the thunder.
It says sore.
Okay. But it says it for the storm drain one, too.
There's one of the sewer and one storm drain.
So I have the last set of plans, I think, that I found in the planning department office set up for 2005, which don't necessarily match the dates on the decision from 2009, but, um, I'll just show you on the plan because I don't think that... So you see, there's, so you see the sewer manhole cover here. Um, there's a drainage manhole cover here. There's one here, there's one here, so those are all in the roadways.
And they're all paved over?
And they're all now paved over.
Right. And technically they shouldn't be, right?
Technically they shouldn't be, so you can access them. I mean, the whole point is if you need to get in there, you don't want to have the, you know, soft cut pavement to be able to get at it.
The, I think that's important, but also critical to note that it was originally on the DPW's list of important things to cover, but then not, then he removed it.
Right. Understanding that it's not going to be a public way and that's, you know...
Right, well, and part of it too, I mean, he's sort of our expert in the field, but we also still have to comply with the original decision and those obligations, so... And then, so we talked a little bit about the fire hydrant. What about these water valves that may have been buried under the blacktop?
There are no, we addressed that with you today.
Okay.
We identified all the water shutters.
Okay.
And we gave that to the office to check it out.
Okay.
That's correct, yep. They hand drew some, uh, the locations and provided it to DPW.
And address the issues with the, the blacktop base for the roads and the sidewalk stuff as well?
We don't have that spec on, on the asphalt.
On the roads?
We gave the plan to the, um, paving company who did the work, a reputable company, and we assumed that it was done according to the spec, but we have not actually measured it.
Okay. Um, and then the other one on here is the, the as-built plans for the DPW, we provided and what copies of those?
Yes, yes, this time here is from '08, this is the as-built.
Should we...
Wow. Well, so let's, why don't we open this up? Is there anybody else that has any comments or questions about this?
Yes.
If you're going to speak, just state your name and address.
Yeah, I'm Anthony Oshetzke, I'm the president of the Mount Thomas Owners Association. Uh, we just had a few questions about, uh, some of the things that are still being done here, uh, as far as landscaping and some slight additional paving that has to be done, that is not listed on this particular plan, that was negotiated through us and through the builders.
Okay, so let's do, how about the landscaping first?
It's in the process right now, it's forming one quite well.
Okay.
So I don't have no problem with that. Uh, but there are some other issues. Did you have that written down? There were a couple of things you wanted to mention.
Uh, well, the landscaping, but the main thing really was this, and I don't understand, Jessica, this private way versus public way, why that would impact or lessen the criticalness of the, the covers, the manhole covers.
So the manhole covers are to access the drainage and the storm system. So I, my understanding is that since it's not a, um, a public way, that the city doesn't actually need to access those, so it's, if the city's looking at, if the city, if it was going to end up becoming a, a public way at some point, we would want to make sure that the city has access to those drainage systems. But the drainage systems are now going to be the responsibility of the homeowners association. So I think that's sort of, that's the gray area.
But the original plans that we approved in the letter of credit applies to having those manhole covers.
So typically a manhole cover, when they're, when it's installed, the manhole covers, and if you go through any, down any street that's under construction, you'll see that the manhole covers are raised higher up, and so there's the base course that goes down, and there's a, you know, one or two inches of manhole cover showing, so that when you do the final base, when you do the final paving, it's at grade.
Right.
And that's how typically how things are done. Obviously, when the drainage was put in, it wasn't put in at the right grade. And so when the paving came in and the top layer was put on, they just paved right over it.
Actually, if I just...
Sure, absolutely.
The base coat was done way prior to us ever buying it and the base coat covered anything, if, if it is under there, covered it.
The base coat covered the drainage?
Yes, there was, don't, we did not pave over any manhole covers.
Sure, sure.
There was nothing showing. And we were going by the asphalt plan that we had from '08 that didn't show them.
But if it was there and it was said that it, that they needed to be at a level where they were available, why then now do the homeowners association have to take on the expense of that? Either having to cut it now and raise it or having to do it when there's an emergency? Um, I don't understand. If you said that it needed to be done in the beginning, why it doesn't have to be done now?
Jessica, could a, uh, a plan be drawn up to show where they are and get them DPW?
But it's not DPW who needs it, it's my understanding, it would be the homeowners association.
Well, they could mark them and have a plan showing where they are, or should they definitely be raised?
The plan is there. If it was built, if it was built according to plan, then they have a plan that shows the location of them right now.
And that they...
And we can make some specifications and never actually mention a manhole, but I have to say that I do feel it's important.
Yeah.
Well, they're part of the plans that were approved.
The problem, and I'm, I'm, I'm not doubting the infrastructure design on this, Jessica, but this is not at all the layout of the property.
No. Because this is an old plan, because it probably has changed.
It, it shows 26 units, first of all, there was, well, 26 plus another eight, shows 34 units.
Right.
There's only 22 units.
Right, so the last decision was from 2009 and this plan is dated 2005. So this is, this is the last version that I can find in the office.
But the roadway is the same. That hasn't changed.
But what's underneath it, we don't necessarily know.
But I mean, the layout hasn't changed. I mean, granted, all the buildings, the second base was never put up, but the structures that are put up are original plan.
Right, but if we're trying to find out where the manholes were, where the infrastructures, that's what we go. Because what we approved or what the board approved at the time and what the letter of credit is requiring is the as-built or the plans from that time. So we don't know based on what we have exactly where those manholes would have been or should have been based on that. Um, do you folks have other plans?
No.
If we did, we probably wouldn't do it.
We have this, this asphalt.
Is the, I don't want to say too much for time, but how the plans, is the barn in the back? I saw that it was down and there's some foundation up there, is that just going to remain like that?
That's in, stay, as far as we're concerned, we talked to the builders about that and that's fine.
The association's requesting that for additional parking. It's really very little visitor parking on the property. And that makes a perfect recycle use of the site.
And last night, we were with the conservation commission and they approved paving the section from the end of the road driveway going into the front of the barn, so we can use it for parking.
Okay. So this asphalt plan, though, doesn't show the location of at least these manhole covers?
No.
Or where any of that infrastructure is?
They chose the store.
And the storm drains?
Correct.
I mean, worried that if at some point an application were to come for the city to convert it to a public way and go through that process, that we, you know, by letting that go now, we may be causing more trouble.
Well, or just the fact that we required at the time and want to make sure that people are meeting their requirements. I guess the flip side is trying to find out where those manholes even are, and I don't know how that's...
If they don't, yes.
Right.
What do you mean if they exist?
Well, what manholes were actually built.
Well...
Right, because we, I mean, we've got these plans from four years earlier.
They might not be there now.
Well, there's got to be something. Someone's got to deal, someone's got to deal with drainage.
Right.
It's got to be somewhere. You can't just have sheet flow happening without having some drainage system in place.
Right.
It's critically important, especially since there's a wetland right next to it.
Yep.
So, um, so there is some drainage system in place, some storm system. It's collecting the water and sending it somewhere.
Right.
That goes into our detention pond over there and that's where the water goes, so that hasn't been a problem at all. It's working out very well.
Right, I think the problem with the manholes is that you want it if there is a problem, so you can get in there and fix it without having to cut through the roadway.
Well, yeah, I understand that too, but, and if it's going to be a big expense or whatever, or somebody's going to be just looking around poking holes in there, we don't want that either. Uh, if they can, you know, definitely find out exactly where they are and do that, that's one thing. But if they have to keep chopping through a new roadway, we don't really want that either.
Go by the... Why is there that show?
Well, they used a magnetometer to check and see if there was something underneath and that's what one of the guys from DPW said he saw between the two drainage, uh, storm drains in front of a mailhouse.
Catch basins?
Catch basins in front of the mailhouse.
So that we're all on the same page. Here and here, you pointed out, Jessica, in the conversation with Joe, I'm sorry, I'm...
So there's two catch basins, so that's, that's a catch basin, so that's...
And did he say that he could access it through there?
Well, so here's the problem. So you've got the drainage manholes that run throughout the street. So if there's a clog, say, between here and here, you need to open up those manholes to get what's happening here. So the water is, is, is collecting at these catch basins, so that's where the water enters the underground system. Once it gets into the underground system, you typically have manholes so that you can access that system between the structures between the two catch basins. So they're saying now that the system's working fine. Um, it's just, you know, really what's important with these catch basins is that you clean them out and you keep the sediment out of there, because once the sediment runs up, then the drainage doesn't work as well. Um, so...
Okay, thank you.
I, I still feel that those, they have to be identified through some way. So that if something does happen, doesn't mean that it's going to clog there, it could clog anywhere.
Right.
Within the system, so the catch basins, those manholes have to be identified and accessible. Yeah. Whether it's private way or not, I don't know.
Is there anybody else here who has any comments or questions about this?
Would conservation have an issue with this as well?
It's not their jurisdiction, it's not affecting the wetlands though. Do you want me to see if I can find Joe in the building? I know he's upstairs at another meeting, but it's a meeting he's running. I don't know if he can step out, but if I can grab him, I will.
Well, I mean, the other thing is, we have the issue with the fire hydrant and the water and sewer bills that need to be done before we can release the letter of credit anyway. So we can continue this until our next meeting, I guess, and try to either get Joe here or get a more comprehensive report. I mean, frankly, I think Joe might have been looking at this from the city's perspective instead of helping us as sort of an engineer, he gives an opinion for what could go wrong for the property owners. And so I would like to, I mean, maybe these grades are, are close enough together that someone could access them and clear a drain without a manhole cover. I don't, I don't know that, I don't know that I can really speak to that without talking to somebody like that. So, um, that may be the easiest way to get sort of an expert opinion on that.
I agree with that, sure.
So your question to Joe is...
I guess it's, um, well, I guess it'd be two things. One would be sort of what would be the process and the difficulty of identifying the existing manhole covers? And whether based on where the storm drains are currently, those would be necessary, those manholes? Or what the impact of that happening would be?
Yeah, it's always a clog, yeah.
Yeah, but I think in the meantime, because we can wait to hear and learn more about the, the manholes, but I think either paying or finding proof that the water and sewer times were paid and dealing with that one foot riser on the fire hydrant, those things are going to have to do.
Right.
Um, and I think that still gives us enough time to either renew the letter of credit or let it pass.
I agree with that.
So that would be my suggestion.
Yeah.
Well, I, I would also think that in the interest of, I mean, if, if the manhole covers were put there and then paid over, I understand that they were paid over before you guys got involved in this, but isn't, wouldn't that be a violation of the plan that we approved originally?
Yeah, I mean, technically, yeah, I mean, I would imagine if we went through this property, there might be minor things that didn't happen exactly as they were supposed to anyway, just in a project like this. So I think the question is whether that's like a material deviation from the plan, which I think is...
I think it might be as far as the property owners are concerned.
It might, might be. I mean, I think that's why I think we need to find out from somebody like Joe what the impact of this is, so we can get some more information. Because I don't, I can't tell you if that is material or not, I just don't have that kind of expertise.
But an impact on the homeowners, not...
Not the city, not the city. I think you, that's exactly right. It's that we issued a decision that had requirements and that letter of credit is there to guarantee that those are performed. And so I don't think it matters. I think Joe may have been looking at it from the perspective of the city and I think we might need a little more clarity from the perspective of a property owner. Um, but again, I don't know, I mean, I can see a scenario where someone tells me that's not a big deal. I can also see one where they say it's essential and you got to have them. But I, I don't, I don't know how to say that myself, but my opinion is, I think if we wait two weeks and try to get more information, maybe we can get an answer that satisfies everybody.
One thing Joe said, was he said the manholes for the storm drains are, he didn't say that this be as important as the sewer manholes. Sewers are very likely the...
I think that's, I think that's probably true.
Yeah, storm drains, if the catch basins obviously are maintained, which they have to be.
Right.
Should be done. Now you have this water running down.
Right, so, I mean, I mean, maybe, and maybe he'll say that, or maybe you won't. Yeah. Okay, so can I get a motion to continue?
I make that motion that we continue the meeting until, uh...
Our next scheduled meeting.
Our next schedule meeting.
Date and time, please.
We're in November.
November 1st?
November 1st, yes.
Yes, November 1st.
I'm sorry, what, do you have a comment?
There's going to be a number of us away from the board from that particular week. Is there any way you could move the date, or are you...
We can't, we don't have any other meetings before then and we have to get it done before November 10th, I think, is the expiration of the letter of credit.
All right, anytime after the 3rd or, or whatever, be okay with the...
It's got, it's ever, it's the Tuesdays. Those are our regular scheduled meetings.
Well, we've got 11, 2?
11.
1.
11, 1.
November 1.
Yeah. Um, yeah, so if you can find someone to come or...
All right.
Or you can get, you know, get the notes together and have someone put it together.
Okay, we'll do that.
Okay, so we had a motion to continue, does it be seconded?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, all right. All right, we'll try again in two weeks, thanks, guys. 11, 1.
11, 1.
November 1st, yeah. Tuesday night.
Uh, yeah, um, let's talk tomorrow about how to get you a copy. It would be a matter of you coming and maybe doing some collateral, maybe get me a copy, bring it back, maybe do that to you. Okay? Or whatever day, just shoot me an email and, or I can just have it available on the other staff.
Sure. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, folks. All right. Then we'll move along to the last item on our agenda. Site plan approved at one thirty Cottage Street. Somebody speak to that? Right. Can you give us your name and address, please? All right. Let me tell us a little about what, what you got planned.
Oh, this is for one thirty Cottage Street, two Hoyolou Street. As you know, back in the year, it was changed from residential to downtown business. We're, we're suggesting rather get specific on the businesses there. It's, we're in retail and office. I believe is the best way I put this. So we don't have to come back and take every time for business. And what we do have in mind right now at this point is a financial services office, a hair salon and a butcher shop. As you can see, I don't think there's, I don't want more to say about it.
You guys are doing the financial services. You'll be on the site, right?
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
Can you show me which is which? I can't see here. Where do you intend to place them?
We're, uh, that, that I didn't point out, uh, we're at one thirty two way Dr. Canasi's spot. This was previously business, even though it was old residential.
Right.
You had Dr. Canasi, you had Dr. Roy, the chiropractor, you had Flywheel, and you had various businesses during the course of period of Louiegee's, including a paintball, you know, Louiegee's itself. So it does have a district of downtown business.
Okay. And then, so you're gonna, the financial services will occupy this middle area here?
Uh, one of the two middles, right.
Okay.
There's the two un-units.
Yeah.
Louiegee's, which is actually, has their own sub utilities. Flywheels has their own sub utilities. And the two interiors, one thirty two A and one thirty two B. We're, we're gonna be occupying one thirty two A. Reflections Hair Salon will be occupying one thirty two B.
Okay. And then where are you planning on having the butcher located?
Uh, butcher is one thirty, one of Louiegee's location.
So.
Well, that's, that's the building that was like. Very colorful.
Yes, it was.
So Jessica, just to clarify, so if we do retail and office, the idea is that then it will be approved for that use as long as there was another subsequent tenant.
Right. So the idea is, you know, we often see with some of these smaller multi-pendent commercial buildings that, I'm thinking of like the Union Street shops or, you know, if, if there's like sort of a blanket permit that allows a variety of specific uses under that larger category of retail and services, then it gives the property owner some more flexibility when there's turn, tenant turnover rather than having every single person come before the board. That's my recommendation to them and that's why they presented the application that way. If the board disagrees with that and they want it to be more specific and they wanna see every tenant coming through, then that, you know, then you need to take that.
Detail.
So I mean, I think as long as it's approved for the use, then.
Right.
I mean, obviously they have other requirements. I mean, if there's a butcher, I'm assuming the health department.
Absolutely.
And that sort of thing. So I mean, um, I don't think we need to get into that, but.
Parking?
Parking.
Yeah. I mean, we need to go through a couple of these things, although your application is comprehensive. I like it. And the colors.
That should be thorough.
So, yeah, I mean, one of the issues is with parking.
Is there parking back here for you folks or?
Technically, uh, technically, no. Uh, but there is, we found that, uh, behind the building, that it was more space that went with the property than, uh, right now, it's the Four-Hole Street has a dumpster there. Technically, it's ours. I suppose it's larger than we initially anticipated after getting surveyed. So technically there is parking there, but the, uh, this is where the snow's gonna go. The dumpster's on the side. This is loading and unloading.
And this isn't your gravel parking area?
No, that goes on the Four-Hole.
Okay. So, but there aren't cars that could park in here?
Well, there, yes.
Yeah. But it's not something you're planning on using?
Well, uh, technically it's not parking per se. We were, we were, like with our term, we were told that it'll be parking at, parking on the street. Here, there's one parking in the spot. These during the day, uh, we utilize their parking. At nighttime, they park, uh, they park along the side.
Yep.
And on the, uh, ends.
You said parking. Parking back there.
Excuse me?
It's like, I remember parking back there when I used to go to Canasi's. It's a bit of a, you could fit, well, ten, twelve cars. Right.
But technically you have to back in. And one of the questions we had is, can you, can you, I mean, really, you can put a sign and back in. But if you back in, yes, you can fit ten, twelve cars quite, quite easily, the whole length. But how do you actually, you put a sign back in only?
Right.
No, that's not gonna happen really.
Well, the zoning doesn't allow that.
Right.
That's.
You have to go straight in.
So what was the one spot you were talking about?
Yeah.
Well, you have actually, uh, on the end here.
Right on the end.
It goes, it goes.
Oh, you, there's space there where you think you could park? Oh, that's all CS snow removal and dumpster, right?
Yeah, dumpster.
There on the corner there? Okay.
So it really has no park?
Technically, no.
Yeah.
Right. It's off-street. Uh, technically, there's no on-site parking.
Right. But it's downtown business, right? So it doesn't have a requirement or?
Because the building is prior.
Before nineteen seventy-three. Okay. So, but I mean, obviously that's gonna be a complicating factor for you guys, but that's just a downtown business. I think it's.
It's just, even where we are now at seventy-two to seven, at the seventy-eight Cottage Street, we've been on the street since, uh, two thousand and two.
Yeah.
And, uh, and, and we have actually technically, there's, I mean, unofficially, there's more parking here than we have at seventy-two to seventy-eight Cottage Street. I mean, I mean.
That is, in my opinion, the most dangerous intersection that I know of. I live on Chestnut and sent my, have sent my kids to Maple and send them both to Whitebrook and, uh, high school. And they cross that intersection right in front of you all the time. There's no intersection. I worry and stress that.
Yeah, that was a tough one.
Pine Stewards are a good intersection.
Yeah.
I, this is how, and actually you can, instead of pulling off into Hoyolou, I mean Cottage into Hoyolou, you can go Orchard and take the side roads out.
Yeah.
You're not going to that intersection.
Oh, yeah. Orchard would be.
You know, that's the way I go, that I go.
But I was just thinking.
It was parked with what we're doing. We have like a client at a time where Dr. Canasi Diva Dettal had several patients at the same time. Parking wasn't an issue for them.
Yeah.
They had to.
We just pull them back there right off of Orchard.
Well, we're talking about use really, right?
Right. Yeah.
So the, I was just gonna ask, the primary entrances for the businesses will be on the Hoyolou Street side, yeah?
Yes. And it's plenty wide, actually. It's actually very wide. It's probably one of the widest sidewalks on Cottage Street.
Yes. My worry is not something that's in our jurisdiction, so.
Yeah.
We're all thinking, what? I wish.
You know, Cottage Street itself, I mean, he really, Cottage Street itself, uh, is tiny quarters.
We're working on sign ordinance and there's one spot where I don't wanna see, just saying personally, big, bright signs that attract attention from drivers and people. It's right on your phone.
Yeah. Well, anyways.
All right. So let's go through the, the criteria at least. So the conformance with the provisions of the ordinances of the city of East Hampton and general laws of Massachusetts. That seems pretty straightforward. Protection of city amenities and abiding properties to the minimization of any detrimental or offensive uses or destruction of the important natural scene or historic features. There's nothing really happening to the building itself, right?
No.
In this exterior. There's obviously no trees coming down or anything, right? Because we're not constructing. Communitets and safety of vehicular pedestrian movement within the site in relationship to adjoining ways and properties. I mean, I think that's gonna be an issue, but it's an issue in downtown businesses in general. I think that sort of you talked about kind of the best possible solutions and way to handle that one.
And I just don't think we're gonna be adding to the congestion.
Yes.
You know? I don't think we're gonna be adding to it.
Yeah. Add, actually the methods of disposal and sewage and refuse and the drainage of surface and subsurface water. So you mentioned the dumpster that you're gonna have on site with regular pickup. Any other sort of, I mean, this is where it gets kind of strange because you're only one of the potential tenants that's here, but, um, any other sort of unique wastes or anything like that that's gonna be generated or anything?
Especially from the butcher shop. We have Vincent here. Does he wanna address that?
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So, um, as far as butcher shop.
Your name first.
Oh, Vincent Corcello, on Two Torrey Way. So as far as waste goes, it wouldn't be any different from, uh, you know, any other place that has food.
Yeah.
Or, or there, there won't be any, uh, any frying happening. So there's no grease, uh, you know, as a separate, as a separate dumpster. Um, as far as cleaning, it wouldn't be any different from what anyone else uses to clean.
Yeah.
Uh, going down the drains.
So you're just gonna have a separate container for all your waste?
Or use the same dumpster?
Yeah, or use the same dumpster, dumpster. Everything fits into a, you know, black plastic garbage bags, just like anything else.
And empty it on a regular basis and.
Right.
It's just sides of meat that are coming into his shop. It's not like it's.
I'm not slaughtering animals. There was left going down the drain or, or, or skins being thrown away or something like this.
So what about, um, that brings up another point about the parking issues. What about deliveries? How do you plan on handling that?
So the deliveries would be in, in, uh, in trucks, like, um, you know, smaller trucks.
Yeah.
There won't be like semi-truck type of things and.
And you think you'll be able to load them just from Orchard Street here?
In the back.
On the back side? Yeah.
Absolutely.
Any idea about like the frequency or, you know, schedule for deliveries or when they'll be?
My, well, my intention would be, uh, a weekly basis, but, um, we're talking probably more of a bi-weekly basis.
Okay.
What are gonna be your hours?
Hours would be from, uh, around like seven to seven type of, type of hours. Um, you know, I, I get to figure that out, but generally, you know, business hours.
Yep.
I think it is important that it's clear that deliveries need to happen off of Orchard Street and not on, in the.
Well, there's really no place in, there's really no safe.
Safe place.
Yeah.
There's, well, like, there's no safe place, but.
But I think it is, that's a valid condition to put on it just so people are clear.
Agree.
Going forward, just that that's not a good place for it.
Deliveries off of Orchard.
Absolutely, absolutely. They would be coming in from the door on the side anyway.
Yeah. Have you been operating somewhere else right now or is this new?
No, this is new.
Have you done this before?
Um, I trained to be a butcher. I haven't had a business in my.
So any other sort of unique things that might be unique to a butcher shop that we might not be thinking about?
Running out of holes.
No.
Any large like water use or anything like that? It's pretty straightforward.
No, I mean, I'm gonna have to clean every day after, after a day, but, um, you know, that's no different than any other food establishment has to do.
And are you doing any sort of, you said no frying, any food preparation at all or it's just?
Food preparation, there'll be an oven.
Okay.
Any in-house eating? Are you people eating there?
Um, not, uh, not officially, like not as a restaurant, not as a restaurant.
Where do you have to take out?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So the intention is to have, uh, raw meat or, you know, what meat that you buy, prepared things that you take home and put in the oven or put on the, on the grill. And then, um, prepare food like tongue beef sandwiches, meatball sandwiches.
Okay. Are you here from the salon?
I am. I'm Stephanie A. Ten Sunset Ave. Um, I have all eco-friendly products. Um, everything's not ammonia. There's, there shouldn't be any concern there.
Okay.
All of the perm and that solutions and everything, nothing needs to be vented out anymore.
So it just go down the drain basically?
Yep.
And any other hair waste, obviously, right? Things like that. It just goes out in the garbage? No big deal?
Yeah. It's protein anyways, but it's gradable.
Any deliveries or things like that?
No. I go to the Spice Star myself.
Okay. Okay. And you mentioned in your application books, the surface water drainage. Are there, are there gutters on there now or?
We, we, we took them down at All-Star. Uh, we have a very good quote from All-Star. They'll be installed within, less than a month. Actually, probably about two, three weeks.
Okay. And what do you have for lighting on the building right now?
Uh, there's lighting, actually there's lighting, uh, on the side. We haven't decided on lighting for the front.
Yeah.
But clearly there's all, it's all windows in the front as it is. There's exit signs. But there's, uh, right now, there's no plan for outdoor lighting in the front. For aesthetics, it'll eventually, you know, once we have the tenants in and, you know, collectively, we wanna know, you know, what would be pleasing to the eye.
Yeah. Okay.
I'm just curious. Um, I had an opportunity when it was for sale to, to go through the site, uh, myself when we were considering it. And, uh, it was in pretty rough shape. Have you, have you fixed it up a lot inside or has it been on renovation?
Well, you, you know, it's really, do you know, there's like, oh, two dozen I-beams throughout there? It's not, uh, it was more aesthetics. It was just peeling back the layers.
Good bones.
Excellent bones, excellent bones, excellent infrastructure.
There was no vacation this year.
There was, but, but the peeling back, uh, the peeling back of, uh, the carpeting underneath, the peeling back of the, uh,
The carpet was the.
The walls, uh, underneath there's brick. It's all brick and Louiegee's, uh, underneath the, the subflooring, uh, it was good bones. So.
The building is always great shape. Enter.
Right.
Like you're saying, when you peel everything back.
We had, we had to peel it back just to see what was there. Just for our own edification. We need to peel it back and just make sure it wasn't something that we wanna.
Getting back to the snow removal here. So you're planning on hiring someone to clear off this back area that you guys are kinda using and also the sidewalks?
Yes.
Clear? Okay. Let's just go through these last few things here. We got provisions for the off-street loading and unloading of vehicles. I think we talked about that, although I think Louis' point is good, making a condition for no, that all deliveries should be on the Orchard Street side.
And as a, from our perspective, that's a must.
That's what you would all do anyways. I think it's good to have it in the record that way. Efforts to integrate the development to the existing landscape doesn't really apply here. Um, removal of vegetation doesn't apply. Inconsistence to development with respect to setback here at place where parking, that's all existing. So, um, I think that fits. Anybody else have anything to say about this?
I'd like to bring up one point and I'm not sure if we can do a lot, but I see, um, a lot of that love meat and I see it as something that I might try at some point. And if some people, you know, coming into, uh, East Hampton, East Hampton from this direction, who knows where they might park, but someone coming from this direction, they might pull up right in front of it, think they can run in. Now clearly that's illegal, but I wonder if there's anything that can be done to kind of discourage that. I mean, we're, we're putting everywhere else up and down the streets, that parking up and down the sides for the most part, where you can find a spot relatively close and run into the place you're going. Here doesn't. And so I, it makes me think that may increase the chance of someone pulling something illegal to run in and out, which is, you know, just places to do it.
Yeah. And it is, it is, I drove by today looking at just that thing and it is all marked. There's no parking with the, the hash marks and stuff. So it's, it's.
Properly marked.
I think that should be weird.
That's actually there.
There's one parking space in front of Louiegee's current.
Right.
Right.
And then there's the bus stop. So.
You know, what I see people doing as a run-in, it's not parking in the front there, but would be going into the Orchard Street.
Right.
If, if, if people were, you know, um, you know, I, I did my training in Italy and in Rome and that's exactly what they do. And when they get a ticket about it, they argue about it because they say, how could you possibly give me a ticket when I'm, when I'm, you know, a customer to a business that, you know, that we wanna do? That being, that aside, um, you know, we can, um, I, I think it's pretty, I've never seen any, but, you know, any even opportunity to kind of pull in there and.
Right.
You know, like it's just not the, it's just not safe for the person to do it. Even like, I, I just can't imagine somebody would wanna risk their car, you know, parking it in the first place.
I don't, the, we've been there since May now. People go to Nini's side door.
Right.
It's known, you, you go on the side.
Right.
People aren't running typically from the front to Nini's.
Right.
If you go out any given day, it's from the side street on Orchard.
Right.
And people dash in and dash out.
Yeah.
Yeah. And there's poles and everything there. So it's not even really like, if you've, you've made the corner, by the time you make the corner, there's no like, you're done. You gotta, you know, turn around. There's no premeditation on parking.
I just had a voice.
No, I know. And I think that that's, I mean, I think the issues with parking are gonna be a hard one that you folks are gonna have to deal with.
The city's been trying to do something there with parking.
You know, the good thing is ever really since the boardwalk's been opened up, people are so used to walking.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's getting more walking.
And our goal is really to make it a purpose for someone to walk from, uh, the pond all the way down to past Nini's.
Yeah.
It, it just creates a walking experience. People, and there's a new, there's a new kind of family movement in the town. And it's the walking family. And that, that was really, that's, and it's, it's wonderful to see.
Yes.
The people walking. And I anticipate.
We're getting back to family.
And we're anticipating more walking traffic than, uh, uh, the parking traffic.
I've tremendously heard from all my customers, oh, you're gonna be in the.
I've tremendously heard from all my customers, oh, you're gonna be in the residence section rather than the business section.
Where are you right now?
I was, I just closed up on Saturday on Union Street.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I guess I'd also like to add, as a, as a city initiative, as far as parking goes, I, I, my understanding is that the parking here, the municipality, is public parking. I'm not sure that that's obvious to most people.
Yeah, so more and more people are being forced to use it, which is-
Yeah, yeah, but, you know.
The city tries to do what it can to advertise that much. People know, I've seen them make some pretty-
There are more people parking.
There's also parking signs on both sides.
You may find this intriguing, but it was in this room, maybe, I don't know, five, six years ago. I was with the Economic Development Industrial Commission when we were discussing about what to do to increase parking, because we don't, one of the things about East Hampton is you don't have to pay for parking here. You know, in Northampton, you have to pay the tickets. And the highest ranked proposal was to buy the building you're in right now, tear it down, and turn it into parking.
Maple Street School.
Just so you know.
Maple Street School is probably the second highest of side off the location.
All right, so anybody have any other questions or comments?
No.
We motion to approve the site plan approval for one thirty Cottage Street with the condition that all deliveries be made on the Orchard Street entrance.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, no abstentions? All right.
Thank you all for it.
Thank you, folks, for your- Thank you.
One of your first up, Chris?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, sir, sir.
Someone approached us, and they approached you. Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Well, we always walk down, get my-
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck.
I think you did a great job.
I need to get your-
I have to go by the sign, because if they're prohibited, then it's, that's where math.
Good enough.
So.
So, Jessica, nothing else?
Sorry.
No administrative items?
Uh, no, but I see Mindy here, so let's follow up on, um-
Sorry, did you call me earlier and I wasn't there?
No, 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 not at all.
Mary, please.
So, we had talked last time about the community facilities definition, so I was able to talk to the city attorney, and now I have to remember what we said, so let me just look. So I think what he had, his recommendation was to, I know that he talked about moving the solar facilities into two locations. One, having governmental nonprofit, and then having one in the, in the commercial retail service or industrial section, so that there could be a commercial solar. In terms of the definition of community facilities, he recommended that we could amend that. And now, what it gets amended to, who knows? But, but take the solar aspect and put it in two different locations, and then, and then just amend the, the facilities definition.
So we would need to put together a proposal to submit to the city council?
The city council.
Or the ordinance subcommittee, right?
To the city council.
And then it comes back to us?
Goes to council, then it goes to ordinance, and it goes to you guys, and then you have your little confab, and then you go, then you either recommend or not recommend, and then they either recommend or not recommend, and then it goes back to full council.
Okay. So what's the-
So you want me to, what I can do is like-
Put together a draft?
Yeah, could you do that? We would greatly appreciate it.
Um-
Feel the love.
Draft for next meeting.
That would be great.
Zoning amend for community facilities.